All right, Tom, you're on record.
Oh, good. The meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Bavaria.
Mayor.
Mr. DeDich.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Meeley.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
Real Soccer Board Planner, Ms. Winter. Our Board Engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our Board Attorney, Ms. Steinle.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, individing, just as for all." Okay, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has to come, would like to come before this board who does not have an item on the agenda to speak to? Hearing and seeing none.
Yes, sure.
We'll move on. First item on our agenda tonight is the 2026 meeting schedule. Has everybody had a chance to review the meeting schedule?
Yes.
Are there any objections? Any points that need to be made out? You know, I didn't see December 25th as one of the dates, so we can... I do know I'll be missing one of them, but I'm sure that we'll have adequate people covering that. Okay, do I have a motion approving the schedule as presented?
Motion to approve. Matt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Very good. We have no resolutions, so that moves us right to Two Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 1.1, Zone ROL, Master Plan Consistency Review. We'll turn to our Board Planner, and she will let us know.
All right, so, Two Sylvan Way, study area was determined in an area in need of redevelopment by the Town Council on March 25th of this year. And having declared an area in need, the next step is to develop a redevelopment plan to provide for the orderly redevelopment of the study area. This plan for Two Sylvan Way redevelopment area, which we have in front of us tonight, is here for Master Plan Consistency Review. So as a reminder, this is a six-acre lot, and it fronts on Littleton Road, Sylvan Way, and Century Drive, located in the ROL Research Office Laboratory District. The current permitted uses in that zone include offices for executive or administrative purposes, scientific reach search laboratories, and other experimental testing or research facilities, limited pharmaceutical production plants, professional and business offices, medical and dental offices, and banks. The property currently houses a commercial office building and associated parking lots. With this redevelopment plan, the permitted use would be warehouses, and those uses customarily included in a warehouse use. We define that as a building utilized primarily for the storage and distribution of goods, which may also include accessory logistics services such as labeling, breaking bulk cardboard boxes into manageable packages, inventory control and management, light assembly, order entry and fulfillment, packaging, kick and pack, price marking and ticketing, and transportation arrangement. It does not include fulfillment centers. As far as bulk requirements, they are largely consistent with the underlying zoning with the following exceptions. There's a current front yard setback is 100 feet. It would remain 100 feet for Littleton and Century. Sylvan would be 80, and the permitted setback for an accessory structure would be 30 feet. And this is really in response to the fact that there are three front yards, and there's a creek that runs along Sylvan Way. As to consistency with the most recent master plan, this area is identified on the future land use map for corporate office manufacturing. The uses in these areas are traditionally large-scale office or manufacturing. The master plan recommends retaining those primary uses while allowing for a range of supportive and/or complementary uses to be permitted. Key area of focus for this category is improved pedestrian bicycle connectivity, both within campus areas and to adjacent residential neighborhoods and business districts, as well as transit. This redevelopment plan requires sidewalks to the extent feasible along all frontages, furthering this master plan focus. Further, the master plan encourages, as part of its economic policy, redevelopment of existing commercial and office areas that are vacant or in need of reinvestment, and that the township supports development that responds to the market demand for modern uses, which I believe this plan does, and I believe it's consistent with the master plan. If anyone has any questions?
Yes? I have two.
Okay.
First, you said that this excludes fulfillment centers?
Yes.
So where is that written in here?
The definition of warehouse.
Does not include fulfillment centers.
Right, it says it does not include fulfillment centers.
All right, and the parking.
Mm-hmm.
It's listed as the minimum of one space for every 2,500 square feet. I know we've talked about this in other applications, but that's like the average, according to ITE, for parking, not the sort of 85th percentile. I prefer to see that as one for every 1,000, which is more consistent with it. And if the, if an applicant comes in and requests less, they can always request a variance if they have good reason.
It's certainly something that could be changed if that's what the board wants to do. So what would be your recommendation?
One parking space for every 1,000 square feet of warehouse, instead of one for every 2,500 square feet of warehouse.
I have no problem with that, but should we be making a working list for our next meeting regarding the master plan? Or, I don't think this is the time to do it, application tonight, do you?
So the board can decide to make a recommendation to the council to make a change in the redevelopment plan for the property, and it's up to the council to decide whether they want to accept the recommendation.
Well, that begs the question then, are we saying that one in 2,500 square feet is inconsistent with the master plan, or one in 1,000 feet would be more consistent with the master plan in that location?
Is that, is the parking requirement in the master plan or just in the ordinance?
No, it would just be in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, in our town ordinance.
And our ordinance is based on employees, which is even more problematic.
Yeah. We don't have, I mean, my recollection is the master plan doesn't say a lot about off-street parking.
No.
So, it, other than the fact that cars are evil.
Encourage pedestrians and bicycles. Yeah, I would agree. So I wouldn't say that that portion of this plan is inconsistent with the master plan, but it's certainly a recommendation that could be made to the council.
So would your thought be that we could still recommend this as being consistent with the master plan, but that the council should consider putting on a higher number of parking spaces for such a use?
Yeah, and I would also say that some of the, a lot of the warehouse applications we've had have actually had the one per thousand.
Right.
So it's just based on the board's experience and knowledge of these types of applications? That would be what the recommendation is based on, and based on the standard, industry standard, is that what you said, Gordon?
Yeah. I mean, if we had 100,000-foot warehouse, you're talking about 40 spaces, and all of the ones we've had that have been similar to that have had more spaces available than that, if I can remember correctly.
Yeah, the one per thousand would mean that 100,000 square foot warehouse would have 100 spaces.
So if they maxed out the coverage on this lot, it'd be about 78,000 square foot building, so it would require, right.
I mean, there's not a lot, it's not like there's a lot of anywhere for overflow parking to go if there's not enough parking on site.
As opposed to 31.
Okay, I'm just, you know, some warehouses require extra employees, some warehouses don't.
Yeah.
So I'm a little reluctant to, you know, say there should be at least this, but I do think it's reasonable for the council to consider it. Any other questions on this testimony?
It's just, I'm just trying to, with the parking, it's only consistent with the master plan here. That's what this is, right?
Right.
So why are we going to recommend what you requested at 2,000?
So, the redevelopment.
If this is consistent with the master plan, why are we going, and I think that's what you were trying to say, Mike, why are we going away from the master plan?
Yeah.
Well, the master plan doesn't speak to the specifics of how many parking spaces are required. So, one way or another, it's not consistent, but when this gets adopted, these rules become the standard to which anyone's allowed to build. And, yeah, the council adopts it, but we can make recommendations for changes for things that we have experience with. To me, I think, I would much rather have an applicant come and tell us and justify why they can use one for 2,500 feet, instead of saying, "We don't have to build more than one for every 2,500 square feet." I mean, it's a recommendation, the council doesn't have to abide by it, but...
Well, what is our parking requirements in other zones with regard to warehouses?
In other redevelopment plans, we've stuck with the one per 2,500. When we look at the ordinance, it is based on employee count. So that, you know, we get all kinds of numbers on how many people are going to be working on any given warehouse.
Isn't it, what is the standard? Christina, is it's...
I can look. Maybe Jen knows off the top of her head quicker than I do.
No, not for all the, most of the uses, but not that use.
I...
Only because that use doesn't come before me.
Frankly, it's...
I've got a few ordinances.
Let me ask.
The industrial warehouse is one space for each two plant employees, one space for each managerial personnel, one visitor parking space per managerial, and one additional space for each vehicle used directly for the use of it to conduct the enterprise. It's by employees and not by square footage.
Well, is it, is it the, I'm just confused. Is it the planning board's responsibility to write an ordinance, or do we just take the recommendation of our planner on the parking?
So the board can make additional recommendations to change the redevelopment plan, but we don't have to.
All right.
Yeah.
What's your recommendation?
I mean, consistency-wise, we've been doing the one per 2,500. I mean, I understand Mr. Math's concerns, and I would, I would generally be consistent with it throughout the town. It makes it simpler for, yeah, against, and for reviews. Makes it an easier process.
That would definitely be my preference, to keep it consistent.
All right. The way it is now. Okay, that's my preference, too. I just was...
Any other questions?
You can.
All right. Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this presentation at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I guess that ends the discussion. Is there a motion to approve as written?
As written, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Bavaria.
Yes.
DeDich.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Meeley.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right. That moves us on to the next item. Park in Willow Lanes, Block 392, Lots 1.01, 1.02, 1.03, 1.04, and 1.05, Master Plan Consistency Review again. Mr. Senikas is not here. And...
Is there another?
Isn't Snikes coming in?
From Burgess, here?
Yeah. I don't see him, and I know what he looks like.
Nora, did you know, do you know if anyone else from Burgess was coming?
I have no idea. He had been copied on, you know, something from the attorney, but, I mean, he's emailed these agendas. He's on the distribution list for every meeting.
Well, why don't we move on to the next item, just in case he's going to show up late, so we can go to application number 25504, Wildlife Preserves, Troy Meadows, Troy Meadow Road, Block 764, Lots 26.01, Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan with Sea Variance, Major Soil Moving Permit for the Installation of a Maintenance Garage, Environmental Education Center, and Site Work.
See you, Mr. One.
Before we start, I have a question.
Yes.
Didn't we approve something like this about five years ago?
About five years ago, the board approved a maintenance garage.
Maintenance garage, environmental education center, and also an observation tower, as I recall.
No. No.
No?
That was the, the radiation, I think.
We were here before you, a few years ago, for a maintenance garage, that we ended up not moving forward with because we were able to put together and move forward with this application that's before you tonight, which is going to be an environmental education center and corresponding meetings.
Okay.
And just to, related to that application, I don't think that was ever closed out with the town, so if you could just work with Nora to close that out, since you're not proceeding with that application.
Sure, yeah. I wasn't sure that anything was still open, but, yeah. So to get started, my name's Matt Dolan. I'm an attorney with the law firm Minor in Landis, and I represent Wildlife Preserves Inc. Do you want me to start out with jurisdiction? I think that I coordinated, I coordinated with the board council and Nora as it relates to our, those publications, our mailings that went out, and the information prior. I provided a copy of a certification to Nora, and I believe everything is in order in that regard. Does this board typically mark that certification as exhibit?
Not usually, no.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
No, I don't need to unless, unless...
It was provided previously, so it's okay.
Okay.
Do we need some waivers?
Yeah, there's a hint. All waivers. Want to do those first?
Go through the various waivers, or do you want me to do it through testimony?
I can do it. I'll listen now. So, there's actually only two. One's for a traffic study, and I ask that you confirm that there will be a net increase of less than 24 peak hour trips in any given time period. And then the other is for combined preliminary and final, not submitting separate sheets. We don't have an issue with.
Do I have a motion approving the waivers as outlined in the ARHH memo of, what is that, 8125?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're good.
Please give my introduction, Mr. Chairman, and then we'll continue. So, again, my name's Matt Dolan from the law firm Minor in Landis. We're here before the board tonight for an application that we're excited to bring before this board. We're seeking preliminary and final need for site plan approval with certain sea variances for required setbacks on the site in order to construct the Environmental Education Center located within the township's RCW zone. We think that this, as you'll hear through the testimony tonight, we think that this application will bring a wide range of benefits to Precipiny and all your various citizens and constituents within Precipiny. It's going to be a means to encourage outdoor activity and access to Troy Meadows, promote environmental education activities and initiatives, and just generally really be a net benefit to the public without any cost to the public itself. The specific use, environmental education centers expressly permitted within the RCW zone pursuant to your township code and the objective of the RCW zone is to maintain and operate the properties within the zone as a wildlife preserve and provide an opportunity for observation and study of the various types of flora and fauna that are indigenous to the area, which this Environmental Education Center will do, as you'll hear through testimony tonight. Notably, too, your 2020 Township Master Plan specifically calls it out the township's desire for construction of a center like this one that's before you tonight. Specifically, the 2020 Master Plan at Page 101 provides that the township should continue to work with wildlife preserves to improve public access, including the development of a wildlife center while balancing the need for ecological preservation. So, this, this application and the proposed center that's before the board tonight is something that's contemplated by the RCW zone. It's going to be a benefit for the town and is also something that the township's master plan has encouraged wildlife preserves or someone to put in and construct. As it relates to wildlife preserves generally, as some of you are aware, they're private, nonprofit, and preservation organization dedicated to the protection of natural areas, open space, wildlife, wildlife habitats for conservation, education, and research. Wildlife Preserves owns and manages a large portion of Troy Meadows and other wildlife areas in neighboring areas. So, with that all being said, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll introduce our witnesses who will be testifying tonight. We're going to have three separate witnesses testify tonight. Our first witness who will be testifying tonight, who's coming up on my right, is Mr. Eric Keller. Eric Keller is a professional engineer and a professional planner with the county of engineering. Mr. Keller's going to be wearing both his engineering hat and his planning hat tonight. He'll initially start out by providing the board with engineering testimony, testifying to the site plans that were prepared by him in his office, and that been submitted to the board. And then, at the conclusion of his engineering testimony, we're going to bring up Mr. Matt Spagnolo, who's an architect, a licensed architect from the Bill O'Garrett Group. Mr. Spagnolo will discuss the architectural plans for the Environmental Education Center. Then we're going to have Mr. Len Ferriello come up. Mr. Ferriello is land manager with Wildlife Preserves, has a substantial amount of knowledge with respect to wildlife preserves and Troy Meadows, and is going to provide a background for the board as it relates to the center and the manner in which it's going to be used. Then after Mr. Ferriello testifies, we'll have Mr. Keller come up again quickly to present our planning proofs for the sea variances that are required for the board. So with that, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call as my first witness, Mr. Eric Keller.
Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Certainly. Eric Keller, K.E.L.L.E.R., Bowman Consulting Group, Six Campus Drive, Suite 302 in Precipiny.
Thank you.
Just move that back a little bit. Sure.
And could you provide the board with some background on your qualifications and licensure?
Certainly. I'll give the short version. Since I've testified here numerous times over the years, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. I testify, I've been licensed for 38 years, both as an engineer and a planner, testified here through many other communities throughout the state and other states, also the municipal engineer or board engineer in, you know, three towns. And my licenses are in good standing, current and in good state. That's enough, all.
Any questions on the qualifications of the expert? Hearing and seeing none. Your witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller, now that you have been admitted as a professional engineer before the board, I think there's some exhibits that we're going to mark to start out with. The first exhibit, which we'll mark as A1, I know I forgot exhibit tabs, but we'll mark on actual document. It is the preliminary and final site plan that was prepared by your office. And what's the date on that, Mr. Keller? It's originally dated November 5th of 2024, last revised June 27th of this year. This is a set of EK sheets, preliminary, final, major site plans for the Environmental Education Center. And I believe that we provided sufficient copies to the board members. The board members should all have a copy of this document that's been marked as A1. So, Mr. Keller, if you would, can you please describe the development based on the site plans, what your office prepared, and the center itself? Certainly. I'm going to turn to Page 3 of the site plans, which is a site preparation and tree removal plan. The tract is Block 764, Lot 26.1. Just to note, the tax map is incorrect. Yeah. Everything else is, it's 26.1, not .01. And I meant to do that as an administrative manner. In one of the professional reports, it referred to the fact that somewhere, I think on the township tax map, it refers to the lot as 26.01. The assessor's records for the county and the township refer to it as 26.1. It is 26.1, as far as we're aware. And as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been a subdivision, and there's no, there's no other .02 or other lots, or another .01 within the township. So, it's our understanding that 26.1 is the correct designation for this lot, not 01. I think it's just a typo in the township tax map. So, the property is as frontage along South Peverick Road between Leonard Way and Preston Road, more commonly known on that sharp curve on South Peverick Road. The property is adjacent to and contains the Troy Meadow, and is located in the Recreation Conservation and Wildlife District, RCW, where these uses that we're proposing are permitted accessory uses within the zone. It's a little different. The principal use is being, is the wildlife, the preservation of the land, so these structures are technically accessory uses, but they're permitted. There, the site does contain gravel driveways, the remnants of prior structures that I'm sure Mr. Ferriello will talk about a little bit more, that have been on that property for many, many years. We are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with, I believe, two variances. And the general description of the project was part of our package of things that were submitted, and it provides a thorough overview of the property and the goals of wildlife preserves, which I'll let Mr. Ferriello talk about in a little bit. The Environmental Education Center, which is kind of the centerpiece of what we're here for tonight, is about 2,900 square feet of main building area. It has a two-car garage, and then there's the maintenance building in the back. I'll let Mr. Spagnolo, the architect, talk more about the building. And the, these improvements are limited to a very small portion of this lot. Lot is about 90 acres, and we're using less than an acre of that land. A lot of the land is constrained by wetlands.
A lot of the land is constrained by wetlands, wetland transition areas, floodplain, and riparian zones, who have the joy of dealing with DEP, which we're in the midst of. The property is predominantly wooded, except for these areas close to South Bevrock Road where we're looking to develop.
Mr. Keller, is that area the area where the historic home was located?
That is correct. There is a gas transmission main and easement along the eastern boundary, but that is far, far away from where we are proposing the improvements. The access is proposed from South Bevrock Road with two one-way driveways. These driveways that we're proposing were the driveways currently exist and have existed for a lot of years. But we're formalizing them. We have a pending application with the Morris County Planning Board. They've provided us comments, and we'll be responding to those. The proposed development is generally consistent with the bulk requirements of the RCW regulations. The two variances, which I'll talk about when I come back at the end, are really a result of the property's environmental constraints and keeping the building in a, you know, kind of a compressed and clustered area. So, I'm going to turn to page four, which is a layout and dimensioning plan, which shows the education center here. Here's the two driveways. It's a counterclockwise circulation entering on the east side, coming around. The parking is to the rear of the building, so that the view as you go by is of this structure, which Mr. Spagnolo will talk about. And the maintenance garage is in the back. As I said, there's also two-car garage with two spaces behind it on the east side of the building. We are removing some trees. Forty-eight of them happen to be alive at this point. Twelve are dead, dying, or diseased. There are no steep slopes that are being disturbed as part of this. This area is relatively flat, which allows us to minimize the disturbance around the The, we have a variance for the front yard setback to the building. Part of what we're doing, I forgot to mention it before, is the county has requested a 33-foot-wide dedication. The deed for the property runs to the center line of the road. Not unusual, especially with properties that have been around for a long time. So, the front yard setback, 150 feet is required. 108.5 feet is proposed to the current property line, but it's 75.5 feet to the proposed right-of-way line after we make that 33-foot dedication. That proposed structure is generally where the house had historically been located, generally. We also have a variance for the setback of the western driveway, the exit driveway. The edge of the curb is 105 feet from the property line to the west. The way the regulations were written was that no improvements, not just buildings, no improvements are to be within 150 feet of any property line. So, that driveway is, at the closest point, is 105 feet, and it varies as you move back because the driveway and the property line are not parallel. The, a portion of the driveways are paved to keep, in keeping with the environmental conservation theme of this project. Most of the driveway and the rear parking area are gravel. We do have paved areas behind the building primarily for ADA accessibility. The sidewalks for the, from the parking area to the building, those that are not ADA accessible are pea gravel. Those that provide ADA accessibility are concrete. So, and then the driveway that extends northerly into the meadow, we're rebuilding a portion of that to get access to the maintenance garage, but the rest of it will remain as it currently exists. The driveways are generally 12 feet in width, except where we have parking to the rear where they're 24 feet in width, which is more than sufficient. We did provide a truck circulation plan showing that there is sufficient maneuverability for fire trucks, also for school buses. The intent with this facility is that there will be a lot of school trips that will come here. We want to make sure that there is adequate circulation for school buses. We've also provided a bus pull-off area on the west side of the building where the bus can park. We have 22 surface parking spaces, plus two spaces within the garage, and in the garage, behind the garage spaces, there's also essentially driveway spaces behind the garage. So, there's a total of 24 spaces, which exceeds the township parking requirement of 22 spaces. We have also chosen to provide an EV parking space on this site, though because of the small size of the parking area, under state legislation, it's not required. But again, we wanted to provide that in keeping with our goals for this. There is a mix of vertical mountable and flush concrete curbing. The flush curbing is to provide edge protection for the gravel areas and also to allow stormwater runoff to sheet flow into the rain garden and in certain areas off the improvements so that they can be managed in a more natural condition. We are not a major development, and what that means is that we're not disturbing more than an acre of the property, and we're not creating more than a quarter acre of new impervious coverage for this project. And the disturbance beyond the limits of the improvement, because this area is fairly flat, is limited. You know, we were able to work with the grades on the property to minimize the overall disturbance and minimize the number of trees taken down and to control the development area. We do have, we are proposing a project sign, which is mounted along an existing fence that is located on the proposed right-of-way lot. And I'll talk more about that in my planning testimony. The sign detail is provided on sheet 11. It has an area of 17 and a half square feet and a height of four feet, which is conforming to the regulations, and the sign will be, will be provided with uplights to illuminate the sign. We did prepare a stormwater management report, which the board engineers reviewed. It's dated November 5th of 2024, of how we meet the municipal stormwater requirements. We do not need to meet state stormwater requirements because we're a minor development as defined by the township. We are reducing the rates of runoff for the project. In addition to the rain garden that we're providing in the front, we have an underground infiltration basin at the rear, which is picking up the parking area. While we're not required to provide green infrastructure as set forth in the state regulations, both of those devices, BMPs, are green infrastructure because they infiltrate. That, all of that is collected into a piping system and discharged towards the stream that runs across the site, which is one of the reasons that we have to go to DEP, among So, as I said, the discharge requires a DEP permit because it's within both a transition area, wetland transition area, and a riparian zone. In accordance with township requirements, we're matching and reducing peak flow rates from the project site. For the 100-year storm, there is a reduction in the rate of runoff of approximately 7%. The, as I said, while water quality measures are not required because we're a minor development, the rain garden provides for water quality. So does the underground system because it's an infiltration system, and it puts stormwater runoff back into the ground. The soil testing was conducive. As part of our stormwater report, we included the geotechnical studies that were done, which showed that there was permeability. As far as the other utilities, water will come in from South Bevrock Road. There's a water main. Actually, because the county repaved the road, the stubs for all of our services have already been extended beyond the pavement so that we didn't have to go up, go back and dig up the county road. The, the system, the building will be sprinkled, so there's a single service, and then it splits into both a domestic and a fire line outside the building. And it generates a nominal amount of water demand based on the small size of the building, based on DEP regulations, 365 gallons per day. There is a hydrant that exists across South Bevrock Road from this site. Sanitary sewer lateral, there's an existing sewer main in South Bevrock Road that's been stubbed out, and that will extend up to the building and serve the building. And based on DEP regulations, that will generate about 300 gallons a day of sewage. Neither of those require any approvals beyond the township. Electric telephone cable will also be brought into the site underground from existing facilities along South Bevrock Road. Lighting, we have full cutoff, high-efficiency LED shoebox style, not the traditional shoebox, they're much sleeker and thinner, but they are, I don't know what else to call them, but they are a shoebox-style light. A total of eight of those are proposed, and they would be on dusk to dawn. All of them are single fixture heads on individual poles at a mounting height of 20 feet, which complies. The average intensity of the parking area is 1.2 foot candles with a maximum of 2 and 1/2, which is fairly, is appropriate for that. Landscaping, we have a mix of shade and evergreen trees because we're working within the existing wooded area. We've been able to preserve a lot of the existing vegetation. So, we are providing a mix of different native material birch, oak, dogwood, red cedars. In addition, there are a number of deciduous and evergreen shrubs around. And with the rain garden, a lot of what we've done is to create a mix of native plant material that one benefits by treating the runoff from the site, but also is an opportunity for wildlife preserves to use this for education. We're doing it. So, you know, there will be opportunities for them to use the plants within the rain garden and around the building as part of the educational process. As we indicated at the beginning, we're asking for waiver of a traffic study. We did submit justification for that. This is very low-intensity use, certainly not a peak hour generator. This is, you know, weekdays during the day, after school events, evenings, and weekends. And the majority of the activities are very low usage. People will be able to come, park here, and walk through the Troy Meadows. That's part of what this facility is intended to do. When they do have events, they're really targeted to families. So, there's a higher vehicle occupancy, you know, not everybody's going to show up by themselves. They're going to come, you know, two, three, four, or more people, excuse me, per car, which reduces the amount of traffic. Other agency approvals we need, we talked about tree removal, a, excuse me, a major soil movement application, which is with the township engineer, Highlands applicability determination, an exemption for that, which was included with our application, township water utility, township sewer utility, Morris County Soil Conservation District, Morris County Planning Board, which is underway. And with the DEP, we have both flood hazard and freshwater wetlands. We have a flood hazard individual permit, a wetlands GP2, which is for utility crossing, GP10A, which is for a road crossing, and a GP11, which is for a stormwater discharge, plus a transition area averaging plan. And we hope to have our DEP approvals by the end of this month. And that's my direct testimony. I'd like to...
I got it. Mine's marked up.
I'd like to start with the GPI review letter dated July 29th of this year. Skipping ahead to page three, five, six, and seven, we've all, we've discussed those and talked about those. Eight, I've talked about the off-street parking capacity. Nine, site triangles. We had, this comment had been in the prior review letter, which we had responded to. We recognize that there is a posted speed limit on South Bevrock Road of 40 miles an hour, which means that the design speed is 45 miles an hour. That curve, if you're headed south towards Route 10, has an advisory speed plate of 20. Going north, it's 15. So, and a lot of times, those advisory speed plates are, you know, guidance to warn people. These advisory speed plates, I've driven through that bend, I can't tell you how many times, and you better pay attention because that curve is sharp. There is not a shoulder available. You've got a guide rail. And we verify that for 30 miles an hour, a 30 mile an hour design speed, that we have sufficient site distance. Now, that's also, when we look at site distance and the ability for a vehicle on South Bevrock Road to stop, we assume wet roadway conditions. That's what we follow in the ASHTO American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials Design Manual. It's based on wet roadway conditions. Dry roadway, you can stop a lot faster than what that says. So, I also had testified that those driveways are where they have historically been. So, I also had testified that those driveways are where they have historically been. Obviously, there hasn't been very much traffic. I mean, the property is open and available for people to go walk through Troy Meadows. So, people do use it. But, again, it, in analyzing it, there is sufficient site distance through that curve for people on South Bevrock Road to stop, for people coming out of the driveway to observe that traffic approaching. So, I'm confident and I'm comfortable that we are providing for safe intersections. The county's already reviewed it and they did not make any comments regarding site distance. That doesn't mean that you have to follow what they say, but that's the feedback we got from the county. Talked about the required DEP permitting for both wetlands, flood hazard, riparian zone. Number 13, we talked about the lot number. And I'm happy to work with Mr. Cangiano, as I have for many years, on any comments he has on our stormwater report. I will tell you that the DEP has been thorough in their review of that document as well. And we take no exceptions to any of the conditions that Mr. Cangiano has.
Mr. Cangiano, do you have any questions at this time?
Yeah, just a few on the letter. Can, since this is a soil movement application and needs to be heard by the board, can you give some details on your soil movement quantities? Do you have any of that information?
Yes, yes, I do.
All route, etc.
What's that?
All route.
All route?
Yeah.
South Bevrock Road, the county road in front of our site will either go north to 46 or will go south. Depends on who wants the dirt. We have, the total amount of soil to be moved is 1,515 cubic yards, which comes out to 40, 45 trucks over the course of the construction, which is not a tremendous amount of soil movement.
Also, on the flood hazard area, I'm glad to hear that your permits are in and you're being reviewed. Is any of the building improvements within the flood hazard area?
No, the only thing that, in the flood hazard area is, I guess I should pick up the microphone, is a portion of the exit driveway. Oh, it shows on here. The flood hazard area extends along South Bevrock Road, clips the one driveway and then run, and actually both driveways at South Bevrock Road, and then runs in the northerly direction. The discharge from our stormwater system is also in the flood hazard area and also in the, that's also in the riparian zone.
Okay. Not directly on your testimony, but you did talk about variance and such. Just in talking with our zoning officers, the concern, we have a little bit of concern with the building height, I think it's 18'4" of the accessory structure. If you go to, anyway, that can go down to a 15-foot building.
I'm going to defer to the architect.
Okay. And the reason why I bring it up, when that goes with building permit, that will likely get flagged as an issue if it's over 15 feet high.
I guess technically, and I'm not going to, I know, Ms. Smith knows the zoning ordinance inside and out. The environmental education center technically under the code is an accessory building. And that, I know, is taller than 18, is taller than the maintenance building. So, when I come back and put my planning hat on, we can talk about it. It's a little, the maintenance building clearly, if the main building itself was considered a principal use, which it's not, you know, that would conform, but, you know, the maintenance building clearly is, you know, I'll call it a secondary structure for lack of better terms.
I'll make a suggestion. You can bring that up and the issue of the seven-foot-high clearance in the attic space in your planning or architectural testimony.
Okay. I'll let the architect put that on the record as to why the buildings are designed that way, and I'll come back with my planning testimony as to why. It's okay.
That works. And the big one that I had is that, going back into the stopping site distance. I know you had your site triangles on there, but the stopping site distance for a vehicle running northbound for the scenario of a vehicle, a school bus or such, making a left into the site, so they're traveling southbound, making a left in, and a vehicle running northbound coming around the bend, what is the stopping site distance for that? Site scale at about 150 feet? Which is less than the required ASHTO for 30 mile an hour design speed.
I mean, I will say one thing while I'm looking for my, our last response, which you stated July 2nd, is that, you know, if it was a school bus, school bus is going to have greater visibility just because the vehicle's larger, it's taller. But we had the left, site distance triangle was added for left turn in movement from South Bevrock Road. The approximate site distance available is 236 feet. That was our response back in July, beginning of July.
And do you, what's your opinion? Do you think that's adequate site distance?
I do. That curve is difficult to negotiate at any kind of speed. And again, that's why I always remind when we talk about stopping site distance, the data that's published in ASHTO is based on a wet roadway. You don't want to be driving that road at any kind of speed when it's wet. So, for dry roadway conditions, stopping site distance is much less than what the ASHTO publishes.
Do you have, you don't have any proposed restrictions like no right in at this time, right?
We have no turn restrictions at all for either of the drivers.
Do you think a right, restricted on a right turn in is, what's your opinion on restricting, say, a school bus from making a left in?
As general practice, as, I'm going to put my third hat on, I'm going to put my traffic engineering hat on. I don't like turn restrictions. I, you know, I think that there is sufficient site distance provided, and, you know, in both directions. People making the decision to start that left turn movement and somebody approaching that. And, other than, I mean, the big constraint here is the curvature of that road, which is very, very sharp. There's no, it'd be different if it was a vertical, then yes, I would have a different opinion. But because it's vertical and that slows traffic down, I don't see that as something that's necessary. The board feels differently. It is also, you know, it is a county road, though, I mean, the town can certainly, you know, make their feelings known to the county, if that's their preference. Part of what happens is then, if you can't make a left in, where's that traffic going to go? You know, how are they going to, and, believe me, the ultimate is to make sure that that movement is safe. So, and again, because of the nature of this facility, it's not during the commuter peak hours when traffic is high. You know, it's in other times of the day when traffic volumes are less. Not that that has a direct impact on safety, but it also, it's not when, you know, volumes are at their highest.
I'll leave it to the board, based on your testimony, if there's any other comments on that limited site distance and safety concerns.
Can I ask a question on this topic, or do you want to wait, Tom?
Well, I want to kind of get all the engineering stuff.
Okay. That was my, that was my last one, and that's why I picked it last.
What's your, what's your further testimony that you would?
I don't believe at this time that I need to address the ARH memo because that's really all planning. And I will, I think when I do my planning testimony, we'll get through all of those items.
So, you're finished with your engineering testimony?
Yes, sir.
All right. Gordon, do you have a question?
So, getting back to this curve, the site distance, do you know what the design speed of the curve is? I know you said what the speed advisories are, but what's the actual design, like radius of the curve and super elevation, what does it translate to, design speed? Because site distance is supposed to be based on the design speed, not close to, per se.
Right. Based on the survey, the centerline radius is 100 feet.
What's RSAS minimum radius, 150?
100.
100?
Right.
Because RSAS is based on a 30-mile design speed.
Correct. And that's what we, our July 2nd letter was all based on the 30 mile an hour design speed.
Well, stopping site distance for 30 miles an hour is 200 feet.
Right. And we exceed that.
I mean, I know we're not in conference yet, but my feeling on turn restriction is that buses are likely to be coming from the I-80 direction or from Precipiny, all of, so I'd be worried about where they'd have to U-turn if we don't allow left turns in.
I agree. Other questions on the engineering testimony at this time?
Actually, I got a bunch, but they're minor compared to the site issue.
I have one small one, and that is, what's the, what's the thinking behind having eight lights on at 20 feet from dust to dawn in a wildlife zone?
We can, motion, motion sensor. I mean, look, there's a balance. We need to provide security.
Right.
And, you know, we're happy to work with the board on, you know, keeping a limited number on. As we said, they're on, the intention is to have a motion sensor, but, you know, we can...
Yeah, I think Mr. Ferriello can testify as to the length and duration of time that the lights will be on, as well as whether or not they would be on a motion sensing timer or not. You know, obviously, we work with the board as it relates to that, as Mr. Keller indicated.
There are...
Couple lights on all night.
Yeah.
I mean, I personally have an issue with heavy-duty lighting, lighting more than you need. I don't, especially in a wildlife zone or any, fortunately, you're not near any residences, so that's less of a factor, but these lights may very well be visible at a distance, and that's...
Especially in the wintertime. Understood. The other thing I do want to make the board clear on is that there are evening events. So, you know, they would need to be on to some period of time so that the people who are attending those events, whatever it may be, and Mr. Ferriello can talk more about that, that they go off, you know, after that, those events would...
I'm just not a fan, at 20 feet, even with shadow boxing, you get a lot of spillage. And it's visible from places that you don't want to have it be visible, that kind of thing.
Understood.
And, you know, having spent a little bit of my life dealing with astronomical observatories, I know that light pollution is a real pollution.
Understood.
Any further, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just a few minor ones. So, the 80 parking space, is that asphalt?
Yes.
Okay. And you've got like little dashes separating spaces in the parking lot. I didn't see any detail, other than a white stripe for parking spaces in the land. Are you doing anything to delineate those parking spaces, or are they just...
The wheel stops.
So, basically, the wheel stops are going to be how you align them?
Correct.
Okay. Actually, this is probably a question from Ms. Winter. I noticed in your memo, you say the front yard setback, minimum front yard setback for the environmental center is 180 feet.
As Mr. Keller pointed out, it really should be 75 feet measured from the dedication. We had measured it from the existing lot line.
No, that's, that's the 108, but I meant that the requirement is, you're saying 180, and I thought, I thought Mr....
150.
Testified to 150.
There is a...
Did I miss?
...setback of 150 required for any improvement. And then, within the RCW zone, let me make sure that just wasn't a typo on our end. The minimum front yard setback is 180 feet for...
I misspoke.
It's 100.
Ms. Winter's is, of course, correct. So, it's 180 feet required...
From the front yard and then 150 from any residential property line. It's on the setback chart.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's hard to read that on my plans there, perhaps. Okay, so it's, so we're talking about a variance, and I know you're not talking planner yet. It's really, it's a 78-foot set, sorry, 75-foot setback?
75 and a half feet.
Versus a requirement of 180? Okay.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
And I'll give you my reasons later.
All right. Any other members of the board have any questions on this? Any members of the public have any questions on the engineering testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing. If you want to come up and state your name and ask your question. Yes. I know. Again, time for just a question.
Yes. It's more of a remark, but...
No, no, questions now. Please state your name and your...
Nick Homiak from Precipiny, Lake Hiawatha. On the bus turn and a school bus arriving and the place being manned, wouldn't people be out on the road to make sure that everything was safe for the bus to come in? A temporary guard to lead the bus in? So, because it sounded to me like they just might have been making too much of the, you know, an issue unnecessarily about the arrival of the bus in the turn.
Is this a question for the applicant here?
I would defer that to Mr. Ferriello, who can talk more about operations.
If you're going to have someone direct traffic, I think that was the question? Yeah.
Like to defer that. I talked about the engineering aspects of the adequacy and the safety. I'll let Mr. Ferriello talk about operations.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Keller. See you back up for your planning testimony.
Let's go to the place.
Um, Mr. Chairman, the next witness I'd like to call is our architect, Mr. Matthew Spagnolo.
That's fine, I'd really rather. I don't want to have to go. Poor Christine, give us.
Yeah. Like I said, senior housing, that's all.
Should we remark on that now, so that we're not holding people?
If you'd like.
All right, actually, just a moment, I want to make a bit of an announcement here with regard to Park and Willow Lanes, Block 392, lots 1.01, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We were supposed to have an expert here giving us a discussion on the master plan consistency. They are not able to make it tonight. So if you're here for that particular case, I'm giving you notice right now that we're going to have to reschedule it.
On the 22nd if we can.
All right. Can I just move, ask the, move it to the 22nd? Do we have time on the 22nd?
I believe we do. Will he be back by the 22nd is the question.
Um, I spoke with somebody from Burgess, and if Ed's not back, then someone from his office will be prepared to present that night.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I have a motion. Shall I have a motion to move the case for Park and Willow Lanes to the 22nd?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so if you're here for that particular case, we're going to hear it on the 22nd. Figured I'd get that done so that people could go to bed. And we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so as indicated, the next witness that we're going to call is our licensed architect, Mr. Matthew Spagnolo.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Matthew, Matthew Spagnolo, S.P.A.G.N.O.L.O. And it's Billow Garrett Group Architects and Planners, 161 Main Street in Ridgefield Park, New Jersey, 07660.
And if you could provide the board with some background on your experience and licensure?
Sure. I have a degree in, a bachelor's degree in architecture. From Syracuse University. I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 2002. I've worked in the profession since 1994. I've been, I've been a partner in the, my current firm since 2011. I have provided testimony and been accepted as an expert in architecture in a number of boards in the state of New Jersey. Member of the AIA, you know.
And your license is current and in good standing?
It is.
All right, any questions on the men's qualifications for this testimony? Hearing and seeing none, counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spagnolo, in connection with this application, you and your office prepared certain documents that have been submitted before the board is all right?
That's correct.
And those documents include certain architectural plans that have been submitted to the board?
Yes.
And in addition, we've submitted photographs to the board previously, which be in the board's packet, consisting of site rendering and a whole historic photograph of the home that previously existed on the site, right?
That's correct.
Okay. If you can, Matt, why don't you run through and provide the board with the plans that you provided, and all these up to you as to how you want to structure that?
Sure. Well, I'd like to start with the, the old photograph here of the, the Smith House that was on the site for a very long time. When we first met the people from Wildlife Preserves, their intent and their hope was to sort of use this as the inspiration for the new building on site, which we embraced and made a lot of sense. The, the scale of the building is, is appropriate. So we've taken some clues from this, you know, there's a couple of other photos, but primarily from this photo and the massing of the building and some of the key architectural elements, like the two-story covered front porch.
Matt, I don't, I don't want to cut you off, we didn't mark that, so maybe I should just mark that as.
Yes, please.
He wants it on the paper copy on the back.
Okay, so again, just for the benefit of the record, when I marked this, A2 is a historic photograph of the historic Smith home that was previously submitted to the board on one sheet with two photographs consisting of the historic photo and the site rendering, both of which we have larger block demonstrations of.
So we, we started with the massing of the building and utilized that as the inspiration for the new building. So a larger form, both forms with gabled roofs with a smaller appendage on the side of the building. We've used some of the elements like the two-story porch, front porch, and integrated that into our design as well as, you know, even the door, front door location and the transom and the, and the side lights, as well as some of the trim work that we're going to mimic at the sort of more interesting columns on the building, as well as some of the, you know, pediment details on the windows. So I just wanted to at least show this image and discuss what, what our inspiration was and what Wildlife Preserve was really looking to do. So you'll see side by side. This rendering, it did.
Matt, let's mark this as A3.
Yep, sorry. Again, the paper one on the back.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, both of these have a paper copy in the back. So we're going to take off the paper copy and it'll be the paper copy, so the board doesn't have to hold on to it. It's the same thing.
And the rendering was prepared by your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So you can see sort of this side by side now of the two buildings. There are some very similar, some similarities to the, to the layouts, to the massing, to the forms. And that was really what we were trying to do here. Obviously, it's not a single family residence, it's a commercial building, it's an environmental cent, education center. But again, we tried to, to take elements of this house and incorporate it into our design, including the gable roof forms. We felt that this is way more appropriate than potentially a two-story, flat-roofed commercial building with, you know, roof mounted, roof-mounted units with screens. We feel that this is sort of, again, the size may be a little bit larger and the, the roof pitches, you know, we've made the roof pitches a little bit shallower. But we are sort of locked into these roof pitches because there's a subtle, again, the precedent we're using has a sort of subtle roof slope over the porch that engages the steeper slope of the main house or the main part of the building. I'm going to shuffle this off too and go over the architectural submitted drawings that we submitted. I guess we've got to mark that as well.
So we'll mark the architectural plant as A4. And then, Mr. Spagnolo, if you could also, for the benefit of the board, just refer to the date of
Yes.
those plans?
Yep.
These were submitted with our application.
Yep, so the latest date on all these drawings, excuse me, is June 13th, 2025. So it was up, an updated version based on the comment letters we received from the professionals. The whole set is here, I'm going to focus on the plans and the elevations. And I'll touch, touch quickly on the, um, the basement. So there's a, the, the building itself is about 3,400 square feet. It's, the two pieces are, the main part is 50 by 50 with a 10-foot, 50-foot long front porch, again, like we looked at the renderings. And then a 30 by 30 garage, I will see on the ground floor. There's, the basement's only under the 40 by 50 part of the main structure. There's a crawl space under the porch and then the slab on grade at the, at the garage. Uh, the basement has, is accessed by a stair from the inside as well as a stair directly on the outside. The basement will primarily be used for a little bit of storage and for mechanical systems and duct, duct supply run to the space above, to the ground floor above. And some of the utilities also come in on the basement. Now, the ground floor, which is the main public floor, it has a, a, sort of entry lobby and reception and displays, and display area that runs the entire length north and south of the building. The sort of ceremonial front door on the south side faces the street. The north side really becomes the practical main facade, the main entrance, because that's where the parking field is. That leads to the, the trails and the, and the trail heads towards, towards the rear of the site. The rest, the remainder of the floor plate is filled with, the, the main element is the lecture and classroom. That is, uh, there, let me, 600, 560 square feet. This will be used occasionally, periodically for lectures and seminars and educational programs. This space comes with some support storage space, a small kitchenette, coat closets, you know, auxiliary displaced areas. No cooking in the kitchenette, it's really just a fridge and a sink for some convenience and light refreshments if they need that. In the rear, there's two public bathrooms, men's and women's public bathrooms. We've cut that off with a, a vestibule to allow Wildlife Preserves the, the, the option to have this open to the public at times where potentially the building is not actively open.
And what's the intention of that?
Well, it, it provides a benefit to the people who have walked the trail and they're coming back to their cars and before they leave the site, if they need to use the facility, they can, so. And there's also a water fountain bottle filling, that thing there too, that will be welcome and helpful as well. Uh, just to finish, the ground floor, the, the one-story portion is a garage. Again, Mr. Keller touched on this, that potentially using this as for four spaces for the employees. This is really non-public space, it's, it's Wildlife Preserve space, it's down a couple of feet from the main ground floor. They have shower and locker room facilities, a separate restroom, and just some general storage space. That's the ground floor. The second floor is the more private of the floors. This will be used as Wildlife Preserve's offices. Right now, it's primarily just an open office area, they'll, they'll put some desk, desks in as they need. The office space has support spaces of storage and copy and fax rooms, printers, IT closet, coat closet. The remainder of the floor is made up of a library slash conference room, a small single seat or toilet to, to provide facilities at the upper level, and a small balcony off the conference room to give some indoor/outdoor space, which we thought was appropriate given the programmatic intent for this, for this building. I want to touch on the, the attic level as, as it came up in some of the comment letters. We generated this based on comments received. The space is only going to be accessed by a residential type pull-down stair. And really, the intent, the, the use of this space is for, again, an air handler's duct, duct distribution system for the upper floor. So we have the attic space serving the second floor and the basement level serving the, the ground floor spaces. There is a dormer, and we'll see when I go to.
Mr. Spagnolo, just staying on that.
Yep.
They called one of the, the letters. So then it's fair to say that that, that level that you're just, you were just referring to, it's, it's not being used as a office space?
No.
Livable level, it's, it's primarily being used to house all the mechanicals.
That's correct, yeah. You, you may wind up with some holiday storage boxes up there, but not, not a lot of storage.
And as you indicate, there's not going to be a stairwell to that?
No.
So it's not going to function as a stairway?
Correct. Yeah, we had previously shown that a stair going up, but that was really just out of convenience for convenience. And frankly, we got the comment and we had had an internal meeting, and even before we received the comment, we were going to eliminate it just from a value engineering standpoint and a space standpoint downstairs if they gain more storage room on the second floor with, with primary, with prime real estate downstairs, so. Just to touch on the, the head heights, because that did come up in the comments. The middle, the middle 11 feet or so is up, up at 7 feet. The roof, the roof pitch is not insignificant, but it's not, it's not 12 over 12, it's 7 over 12 with the porch roofing 4 and 12, uh, and the dormer being 4 and 12 as well, we'll see on the back elevation. So you wind up with 7-foot clear in the middle swath of this. On the front, it really slides down all the way to zero, like, you know, in your house. Same thing flanking the dormer, and then the dormer, the roof comes to a 4-foot 8 height. Again, that is generated on aesthetics on the back elevation. And just to get a little extra head height, you know, it really primarily is for the aesthetics on the outside view. But again, the 7-foot does exceed that, that diagram that's in the ordinance that says the maximum is 4. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure I could get this gable roof shallow enough that before, but clear height, that, that would be difficult. I'll move on. So the elevations, again, this, this elevation we certainly saw in the, in the rendering. It mimics the front of the old Smith House, the two-story covered porch. You know, and this space now becomes, again, a sort of outdoor space that they can use. They can overlook the rain, the rain garden. It really gives you a place to gather, another gathering place outside of the building itself. Front door, we've sort of mimicked the shut, the residential shutters. Um, the materials are going to be residential in nature, they're going to be asphalt, shingles. It's going to be fiber cement, fiber concrete siding, clapboard siding. As, you know, with the appropriate trim, again, we're picking up interesting, the interesting, and trying to mimic the interesting details from the original house. There'll be some rubble, masonry, veneer on the exposed foundations. It's been decided, and it shows on the, on the rendering, that the fireplace chimney will be brick, not the rubble. So that's, that's an inconsistency, but it will be brick. All the windows will be sort of residential wood clad type windows. All of them will be operative, which will give them some options in terms of natural ventilation and so forth. Uh, this is the back and the other side elevation, and this is the parking lot facade. So you'll see the one-story garage piece, the main entrance on the backside, flanked by the two bathrooms, the balcony above, some windows scattered about. This is the dormer we meant, I mentioned before. That gives you a little extra height on the, on the transverse axis. And last sheet, sheet 400 is just the sheet of all the elevations and the plan of the proposed accessory maintenance garage building. Uh, the intent is by Wildlife Preserves is to purchase a pre-engineered steel building for this. Um, it will have metal siding, metal roof. And that's about, it's 980 square feet, it is 28 by 35. And that's about, it's nine hundred and eighty square feet, it is twenty-eight by thirty-five. The height's been talked about, there's eighteen feet four inches to the top of the peak from the floor level. The, I know there is a concern about having an oversized door to get the appropriate tractor in. And that's part of the reason of the height, you know, perhaps this pitch could get a little shallower at six and twelve. But again, these are sort of the initial plans of what the client was looking to purchase and put on the site. So, that's where this is based out of, we could certainly reconsider that if the height becomes an issue. The last bit is, we have, Wildlife Preserves, and consistent with their mission and their objectives, we have submitted this for consideration with the United States Green Building Council for lead certification, so to be certified by a third party that it will be sustainably designed, a sort of green building, as it's typically known. That's where a lot, you know, really makes sense to do that for this type of project. It gives them sort of something to talk about and additional lessons to teach people as they come and how to build sustainably, respect natural resources and so forth. So, it made a lot of sense to do that. So, we're pursuing that now. It's not, it's something that we, you follow through construction to the end of the project, so it's not something we'll get before, but we are striving to get it certified or silver rating if we can. And that really takes into consideration some of the stormwater management ideas that Mr. Keller described, the rain gardens and so forth. So, that's really all sort of tied in, our material choices, our daylighting, you know, almost every room basically has a window in it, so that's another important issue, is to get proper daylighting in the space for the occupants. And that's really it architecturally.
I think you hit everything that I had on my list. Mr. Chairman, do members of the board have any questions, Mr. Kell?
Can I hear any questions from members of the board on this? Christine?
I may have missed this in Mr. Keller's testimony, how is trash being handled?
You did not miss it in Mr. Keller's testimony, but either Mr. Fariello and/or Mr. Keller can testify to that.
Okay.
He comes back, Mr. Keller comes back as a planner, or Mr. Fariello can testify.
All right, I wasn't sure if it was being stored inside or it was going to be outside, so it...
I...
Nope, we don't know. Okay.
All right, no members of the board have questions? Or any members of the public have questions on this testimony at this time? Bearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Kell. The next witness that I'd like to call is Len Fariello. Perhaps a lot of them, Len, do you want to sit down or stand up? Len hasn't been feeling so well.
I prefer to sit down.
Okay.
I'll stand for you.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
I'm Fariello, F-A-R-I-E-L-L-O.
And your address?
My corporate address is 1001 South Bevick Road in Persipony.
Thank you.
And I would like to just address Mr. DePiero. What you recall about the Environmental Education Center was you sat on the council when we did a zone amendment to add an environmental education center. But we never really went to the planning board, this is the...
This is the first time we're before the...
And there was an observation tower discussed.
Yeah, it was a zone amendment, what you recall, to add an observation, to add a maintenance garage and to add an environmental education.
Didn't you guys come before us a few years ago for the...
Maintenance garage.
With maintenance garage, yes.
Not for environmental...
Right, not for the environmental...
I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you, Len.
Okay, Len, to get started, why don't you provide the board with a little bit of, about your own background and your background with Wildlife Preserves?
I've been with Wildlife Preserves since nineteen seventy-three, that's over fifty years. I started out as a ranger, a wildlife ranger, patrolling the land because the land prohibits hunting and trapping. So, that's where I started, and now I manage the land for Wildlife Preserves. And some of my duties are to, we remove invasive, non-native species from the preserve, and we plant wildlife, we plant wildflower meadows, we plant masked trees to enhance wildlife, and that's during the summer months. And we also lately have started to create trails, which we never had before. But for the past ten years, we've created trails, and we now have seven trails open to the public.
Those were discussed too.
What's that?
The trails were discussed too.
Yes.
Some on dirt and some on raised boardwalks.
Yes, we did, we added, that's correct. So, we have no raised boardwalk trails right now, but we do have seven trails, we have a trail map, a kiosk at the end of Troy Meadow Road, which serves as the entrance to Troy Meadows right now. But once the Environmental Ed Center is built, that will probably serve as the entrance to Troy Meadows. And there's a gravel road that goes from the Environmental Ed Center all the way to Troy Meadow Road. So, that's an existing trail, and we call it the Green Trail. In the winter, I help post and patrol the land. And on rainy days and office days, I help manage and manage the corporation.
And Len, does Wildlife Preserves also coordinate and run educational programs?
Yes.
What kind of programs?
That also is new to us. In the past ten years, we've had moth night, which we attract nocturnal flying insects, we have a bat night with Rutgers, we have herpology walks, we have firefly night, really popular. People from the neighborhood come out, and we have a program about fireflies in July. And we also, and we're planning this in October, to have a block party. We had a block party last year, and it was very successful. So, those are some of the programs we've had.
And is Wildlife Preserves planning to expand that environmental-type programming with this Environmental Education Center?
Yeah, we hope to. This will give us an opportunity to have an indoor space. And in there will be a museum for children to see and learn about ecology and wildlife.
Len, in connection with the application, one of the documents that you submitted to the board was a document titled "General Description of the Proposed Development." Do you recall submitting that to the board?
Yes.
I'm going to mark as A5, a copy of the general description of the proposed development that's dated November 2024, which the board members should all have a copy of already. And Len, why don't you go through that general description of the proposed development? You don't have to read the whole thing because the board has a copy of it themselves, but provide an overview for the board as it relates to what that description is and what you provided to them.
Well, this talks about, well, first of all, we don't want this to look like a commercial building. So, we designed it to match the old house. And what we're trying to do is have a place where the public can gather. We still have plenty of outdoor activities we're going to have, so it's not always going to be indoors. But we chose this spot because it's on the main road, and I think that was actually a requirement in the zone amendment, that it wouldn't be through a residential area. And it's just an ideal location, it's a redevelopment project. It was previously developed, yes, some trees have grown up there, but we chose the site right where the old house that was there that burnt down, I think it was nineteen seventy-six, it was burnt down.
That was owned by the school board, wasn't it? Wasn't that property owned by the school board?
No, that was...
Further down?
A little further down the road. Yes. So, we chose this spot, and we also set it up on the compass, true north. And it's twenty, the old house was actually parallel to the road. This is twenty degrees off-center, but it's set up on a compass, which is beneficial for what we're doing there. And you can see from the front porch, you'll be able to see right up the road. So, that's why we chose that orientation. And I don't know what else.
No, that's okay. Do you want to tell the board a little bit about the history of the site and what the site looks like now?
Okay, the site, we began this project, believe it or not, in 2019. Luca, Fariello, and I began clearing all the invasive plants. You couldn't even walk on the property, it was full of, those of you who know, barberry, which is an invasive plant, Japanese barberry, a multi-floral rose, very thorny plants. We started clearing that and vines, and we discovered a whole farm, a lot of outbuildings, foundations, we didn't even know were there, chicken coops, sheds. So, we prepared the lot and, oh, and we planted a lot of pollinator gardens on the property. And it's really a good location for this. Actually, we can't move it to the left or to the right. If we moved it to the right, right now, we don't impact any wetlands, but we impact wetlands transition areas. And in Troy Meadows, Troy Meadows is an exceptional resource value wetlands. So, there's a hundred and fifty-foot buffer between the wetlands and any development. So, we can't move it any closer, we're encroaching on the wetlands, on the transition area, by about five thousand square feet. So, we can't move it that way, and we can't move it the other way because we'd be decreasing the side yard setback. So, it's really the perfect location, and it's where the house was. And incidentally, it came up about the driveway. The driveway historically came straight in off the Big Bend. And it was the former Mars County engineer who suggested the location of the current driveway as adequate site distance. And so, that's why the driveway is where it was, because he claimed it was more dangerous coming straight on in from going down that hill where the driveway was. So, we actually moved the driveway, and he cut an opening in the guardrail for safety reasons to move the driveway where it exists today.
Just to speed things along a little bit, because I know you're tired. I was going to have Len testify to some of the photographs as well of the site as it currently exists, but the board has those, and can look at those. So, unless the board wants him to testify to those, I'll move on to the environmental assessment study that Len had prepared. I'm going to mark that as A6, we submitted this previously to the board, it should be in the packet that all of you have. It's an environmental assessment study dated April 25th, 2025. And Len, can you just explain to the board briefly an overview of the environmental assessment study that you prepared for?
Well, I prepared an inventory of all the plants and animals on the site, which isn't even, I don't think it's even part of the requirement, but it's in here. And I note that it is consistent with the master plan, and the master plan, it says, I had it quoted here somewhere. Oh, this started out, this was an idea from the Environmental Education Center at Troy Meadows, was proposed by the Assistant Precipony School Superintendent John Sheehy many years ago. And I think the most important part of the report is the, is the part where I talk about the positive criteria of...
You're not a planner, you're just telling us...
What's that?
He's saying you're not testifying to the positive criteria in the sense that you're not a planner, right? But, and so, we will leave that to Mr. Keller, I think. But what you should testify to, I think, is the overview, is the, what the proposal accomplishes, you know, what you expect to do with the Environmental Education Center, and what the environmental impact is, if any, on the property. Why don't you tell the board about that?
Well, we hope to improve the property, we have been improving the property. We're going to disturb one acre of land. We own over two thousand acres of land in Troy Meadows, and we manage more than that in Troy Meadows. And we don't actually know how this Environmental Education Center is going to work. It's kind of like we're going to build it, and then we're going to create programs for the Environmental Education Center. So, I can't really talk too much about what we do. We do visualize having a classroom, there is a classroom here, to educate residents and children about the environment, about ecology, and about wildlife.
And Len, is it fair to say, as well as set forth in your report, that part of the intention here is to facilitate and further access to Troy Meadows for residents and neighbors of Precipony?
Yes, because it'll provide a parking space for the residents. And like I said, there's a trail that goes from South Bevick Road all the way to Troy Meadow Road, which meets up with six other trails along Troy Meadow Road and in that area. So, there's a total of seven trails, and this will be like, probably be the main trailhead once it's built.
And I know there's no plans in place as of yet because this isn't even built, but some of the plans include working with local schools and the like for environmental education programs?
Yeah, I believe that will be the case. Right now, we just really have families coming to our events. We haven't had any schools or school buses or schoolchildren. Most of our events so far have been geared to the family. But once we build it, I think that we'll figure that all out, how we're going to make this work for the schools as well.
Okay. I don't have any other questions specifically for you, Len, unless you have anything else that you think you want to say.
Well, I think it's a minimal impact compared to all the land that we manage and we are improving.
Any members of the board have questions on this witness, on this testimony?
Just one for clarification, you mentioned two thousand acres. Fifteen hundred of those acres are in Precipony Road.
Correct.
And then five hundred is in East Hanover?
East Hanover, yes.
Mr. Matt?
Wasn't there going to be some discussion about potential for a traffic director?
Well, I think that came up because one of the members of the public had asked about it, and Mr. Fariello can testify to the extent that, sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, it was, yeah, but I think it was deferred to Mr. Fariello to talk to.
He can talk about it if he knows. My understanding is that there have not been plans for any traffic director, but I think Mr. Fariello could testify to whether or not that could be a potential if there's a big event, right?
It could be. It could be. We're limited in indoor space and parking space, so the events can't be too big. And we're not, we're not a commercial operation. So what we have now, like I said, is just cars and families. It could grow to that where we can have field trips there and it probably may. And we'd be open to having somebody there in the event of school buses because that seems to be a concern.
You could coordinate with the township police department as needed?
Oh, of course, yes.
Any other members of the board, Mr. Vadeech?
I know things are still being planned out, but what kind of operations, you know, hours of operations you expect?
Hours of operation.
I expect we'll have the gates opened seven days a week and there'll be access to the restrooms and access to the trails. And as far as the building, that's going to be limited. And I really can't tell you, but I will say that we're not geared to rush hours. We're mostly geared to weekends or Friday, Saturday, Sunday is most of our events right now. And people come to Troy Meadows seven days a week and they park on Troy Meadow Road to access Troy Meadows and the trail system that we built. I expect that'll increase once we have the Environmental Education Center there and a parking lot there.
Okay. And in the current state, I know trails are open seven days a week. And I did see there are three employees on site?
Yes, we have three employees that will be working the building, yes.
But they are, they are not monitoring the trails in the current state, right? They do not take, you know, do not monitor the trails?
Are, do you currently have employees that are monitoring the trails, the trail system throughout Troy Meadows?
Oh, yeah, of course. They have to be maintained. In this time of year, some of them have to be mowed because the weeds get really high.
Okay. But not as people or the neighborhood people come in and use the trails? There is nobody to monitor those, that audience, right?
What do you mean by monitor?
Just be there, right?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have people there every day, yes.
Okay. But how could three employees manage it 24 by 7, just seven days a week?
It's a big piece of land. You can't be everywhere. I don't know what you're saying, like, security?
Security, yeah. Kind of security or?
No, we don't have, we have rangers, wildlife rangers.
Okay.
Making sure that they're following the rules we post the land. But we can't be everywhere and the trail network is pretty vast.
Okay.
I think what he means, if I can, I think what he means, Len, is that not monitoring the trails, monitoring the site, where the building is going to go, where you're going to be parking buses there, you know, buses going in, coming out. I think that's what it means by monitoring it. And that's going to lead to this question with regards to patrol and with regards to police enforcement. Okay? And this is where Mr. Keller made a reference with regards to the turn and how sharp it can become and stuff like that. If you have a big event, will you be hiring police officers to monitor the traffic?
I don't anticipate we're going to have big events like a big fair or anything. This is an Environmental Education Center. We really want to keep the theme to the environment. We don't want to have a lot of negative, I mean, people, if they bring their dogs and they bark and, you know, we don't, we want to, it's going to be a modest operation. And there's been a lot of talk about school buses. We haven't even anticipated that at this point. We, the county asked us to provide a school bus parking space, which we did. And that's the only time a school bus came up. Now, I'm not saying we won't have it, but at this point in time, we don't have school buses coming to Troy Meadows.
Okay. And then this is my follow-up question. That's not really a question because I know the area pretty well. People can always access South Bevick Road, make a left by the kiosk over there and go through the trails that way too. So basically, this building is going to be like educational, right? And residents or anybody from Morris County, actually, and anywhere in the state can access your building and go into the trails and stuff like that.
Yes.
That's, okay.
The only thing that'll be open, when the gates are open, is going to be the restrooms.
All right.
But the building, we don't anticipate opening, I mean, to be open, let's say, five days a week. We don't anticipate that.
You'll have some sort of set hours?
All right, that's all.
No, we don't have that and we're still, I mean.
When the building is open, you'll establish some sort of set hours that it would be open?
We will figure that all out.
If you have any comments on the lighting issue that I brought up before?
Yes. I'm glad you did bring it up. We plan to, we don't plan to have the lights on 24/7. We plan to have the lights on with sensors if somebody would access the site. But we like the dark sky for bats and for nocturnal flying insects and we don't really want to be a lit up building. We want to look more like a residence. And that's what the whole design of the building is, is to look like a residential building, although we will have classrooms in there and a museum and office space. And, and we will maintain our equipment there. And talking about the, I'll just bring this up, the maintenance garage, the same maintenance garage that you see on this plan was approved at the end of Allen Drive about three or four years ago. But when we started planning for this environmental ed center, we decided that why should we have a maintenance garage way up on the hill at the end of Allen Drive and environmental center? So we incorporated everything together. But I just wanted to say that the building that we're proposing and the same dimensions and the same building was approved by the planning board several years ago on the hill, which we call Cameron's Hill off of Allen Drive.
So your lighting would be intended to be purely for security, would not be on dust to dawn?
That's what we anticipate unless the board says otherwise.
Well, I don't like the idea of having an unused parking lot lit up at night.
No, we didn't, we didn't want to have that either.
You know, I don't, I don't mind maybe a couple of lights on the building itself that stay on for purely for security reasons.
I think we designed it with, for, for motion detectors, that if somebody were to drive down at night.
Well, if you've got a fox running by or something, you don't want the lights popping on if you can help it.
We will, we could have on/off switches as well, but we don't really anticipate having it lit up like a commercial building.
Okay, well, I mean, purely like a residence is fine, you know, where you have some reasonable security around the perimeter of the foundation of the building, but not out into an empty parking lot.
That's what, that's how we envision it, yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm just not a big fan of boxes of lights on 20-foot colors.
Yeah, they will be there because I think it's part of the plan and our engineer can speak to that.
When it's being used, that's fine. I mean, you got to do it.
Yeah.
But when it's not being used, why?
Right. Yes, agreed.
So we're amenable to that?
Okay. I mean.
So motion sensors around the building, time, or on/off lights by the parking lot when in use only?
Yes.
As a condition of approval, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other members of the board have any further questions on this testimony at this time? Are there any members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Okay. And that leads me to my final witness, Mr. Keller, who started the night for us, who is back, but this time, Mr. Keller is going to testify as a professional planner.
And you remain under oath.
Understood. Thank you for my planning that. So a couple of variances. One is the front yard setback for the principal building, what I'll call the principal building, 180 feet, 75.5 feet to the proposed right-of-way line after dedication. The site improvement setback, 150 feet required, 105 feet proposed. The sign setback, I believe is a variance as well. 10 feet is required. The sign will be on the fence, which is on the proposed right-of-way line, so it has a 0-foot setback. And we'll add in the building height. The building height, I take it from the prior discussion, accessory buildings have a limit on 15 feet.
Before you go too far on the accessory buildings, it specifically says in a residential or business zone, which this is not. However, it's being used as a business. So it would be the interpretation of the zoning officer. Okay. I'd be more comfortable having it. We're going to, you know, we don't have a problem with it, but I, and I agree, they're both accessory buildings. But that way, if this comes up again in another application that's in another zone, we have 33 zones and it's brought up again that I didn't say that they needed it, I wouldn't want that to come back.
Overabundance of caution.
Exactly.
15 feet permitted. The main building, the Environmental Education Center, is what's rounded up, 27.7 feet. And the building height is to the midpoint of the roof. So it's 27.7 feet to the midpoint of the environmental center. The maintenance building to the midpoint of the roof, it's 18 foot nine to the peak. But give or take, we didn't do a full calculation because it's less than the main building. The height of the maintenance building is about 16 feet. It's a little under 15 feet to the midpoint of the roof plus a foot or so for average grade because it pitches away from the foundation a little bit. So I'll call it 16 feet. But it's less than the Environmental Education Center, which is almost 28 feet. So the variances, these are C variances, they can be granted under two purposes set forth in the municipal land use law. C1, which is a hardship waiver, which goes to the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or the shape of a specific piece of property, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or physical features uniquely affecting a piece of property, or by any reason of extraordinary exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property. So we, and then the second part goes to the purposes of planning or advance, the C2 variance. The purposes of planning outweigh any substantial detriment caused by the request of that variance. Now, so in this case, for the setbacks, it's a combination of C1 and C2. The C1 hardship or the uniqueness of this property is that it is significantly constrained by wetlands, wetland transition areas, flood hazard areas, and repairing stuff. We're really building, and even in the part that we're building on, we're still impacting on those environmentally sensitive lands, which unfortunately is why we got to go to D-1. I'd like to avoid that any time I can, but we could. The rest of the property, moving it back would only increase those impacts. It would increase the disturbance. It would increase stormwater runoff and creating more disturbance, which runs completely counter to what Wildlife Preserve is all about, which is preserving the environment. And the, and to that degree, and I'll get into it a little bit more detail, the purposes of planning are advanced by this. Now, the township master plan, which we reviewed, which is dated January 6th of 2020, Goal 7 recognizes a special value of Troy Meadows. This facility is there, is being proposed to enhance and advance access to Troy Meadows in an environmentally sensitive manner. And it supports and enhances the preservation of the area. They're in there. This provides an opportunity for the public to enjoy responsibly those areas. Section 2.3 of the master plan under zoning identifies the RCW district as one area in the township, one zone dedicated to preserving open space. That's the purpose of the RCW zone. And this project will advance that goal. And that section, you know, specifically identifies the uses that are being proposed here, the Environmental Education Center, the maintenance building, the support service. This goes, this continues in the master plan in section 3.4, which talks about environmental conservation and sustainability. And it talks about the value of Troy Meadows, a mix of public and private owners with much of it owned by Wildlife Preserves. And this provides support for that organization to preserve and enhance the value of Troy Meadows and their surrounding properties. So the sign variance, the building height clearly are C2. There's no hardship to that. I mean, one thing that I would use is the, what was it, Exhibit A?
I'm currently on A6.
No, no, I just, A2, it'd be great. If you look at the former structure that was on the property, which is on Exhibit A2, and then you look at what they are proposing on Exhibit A3, it mirrors, it's not a replica, but it mirrors the aesthetics of that original building, keeping it in the context of what Precipity is about. And that goes to building height of having, we could lower the building and put a flat roof on there. It would not be as attractive. It would not be consistent with what has, was there in the past. And having a steeper roof pitch creates a more residential character. The sign location, while it's right on the proposed right-of-way line, it's about 18 feet from the edge of pavement. Putting it a conforming distance back would create, I mean, it eliminates the purpose of the sign. Nobody would ever see it. And it's an appropriate location for it, does not create, you know, a hazard. So the purposes of planning that will be advanced by the granting of these variances under the C2 criteria, talked about the C1 in that we're minimizing the impact on the environment and the environmentally sensitive areas. You know, there's, in my opinion, five. One is Purpose A, which is a very broad overarching goal of encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands. This. This clearly does that by minimizing and keeping it tight. Purpose G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of different uses. This use fits in this location, it's on a county road, it's proximate, it's easily accessible, and it provides access to the Troy Meadows. It's an appropriate location. Purpose H to encourage the location and design of transportation routes. This goes really to the signage, of placing the sign in an appropriate location so it's visible and identifies the use on this property. J is to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, which doesn't apply here, open space and valuable natural resources. That's what this whole center is about, is open space and protecting valuable natural resources. And finally, purpose M to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development. Here's a nonprofit, but private landowner that is building a facility, a center that will benefit the general public. It will open up these lands to access, creating recreation, educational purposes, well, the things that I don't get normally to talk about when I come before the boards to talk about development. It's nice to do this once in a while. We also have to talk about the negative criteria. The board must find that each of these variances can be granted without substantial detriment to public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone So no variance or other relief may be granted under the C criteria without a showing that such variance or other relief can be granted without that substantial detriment to the public good, or detriment to, or impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning work. The setback variances are a function of the environment, they're not going to impact on light air and open space to the adjoining properties, there's nothing else proximate to this site, it's still a substantial distance away, the access points are properly located to maximize site distance, and they are best suited to be at this location. The sign variance, I think, kind of beat that to death enough. And the building height goes to, again, we could make it, I mean, it's a two-story structure, you're never going to get that down to 15 feet. You could make the maintenance building 15 feet tall, but again, the purpose of that maintenance building is for their equipment. You need height in that building, and also you don't want to put a really low pitched roof on there, and that is not aesthetically pleasing. It is not consistent with the design of the house.
And Mr. Keller, do you have an understanding as it relates to what that equipment does within Troy Meadows?
From what I understand, it's, it's tractors, other equipment that is used to maintain the facilities to further their operations within Troy Meadows. I don't know the specific equipment, but I know, you know, tractors and other equipment.
So to maintain the trails that are, that are being, I guess, the open access is being facilitated to via this application?
Correct. It, it supports the purpose and intent of their operations within Troy Meadows. So it's just one more thing on the sign. The sign itself is not going to create a hazard to the motor and public, it's going to identify the site, going to provide enough visibility that somebody can identify where the education center is and be able to enter the site safely. Excuse me. In conclusion, none of these variances impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and can be granted, in my opinion, without substantial detriment to the public good and general welfare. That's.
So two more things for you, Mr. Keller, from on my end. Ms. Winter brought up the location design of the solid waste and recycling. I know that goes back a bit to your engineering testimony, but can you testify as to the locations of, of waste and recycling? I think it's depicted on your plans.
That's what I thought. I'm looking, I'm like, there's no dumpster, there's no dumpster.
That's what my question was.
Yeah, there's no dumpster, it will be kept, you know, garbage and recycling will be kept in the building for whatever they generate.
Anticipate it would be a low generator.
Right, it'll be brought out to the curb and picked up.
Okay.
Or, what else?
That's that. And then, I'm not sure if there were any other comments that required testimony in Ms. Winter's.
I didn't think so, I think it was more.
More the planning testimony?
Right, I'm sure I cover all the points that we got to cover.
Which you did, thank you.
Do you have any further questions or thoughts?
No, I, I think the, going in the height of the building, this makes much more sense than a one-story, potentially larger footprint that would have a greater impact on the surrounding land.
And I think, you know, the similarities in the character of this building are very similar to what had been there. And I think it fits in well, South Everwood Road in general is residential in character. And I think this fits in very nicely. All right.
Mr. Chairman, one administrative matter, I didn't want to cut Mr. Keller off, I just want to confirm the board admit him as an expert, professional planner, as well as an engineer.
That's true, I didn't do, go through that. Are there any questions about the qualifications of this expert as, as a planner?
Your license is current and in good standing.
Current and in good standing, yes.
I've got a few. I'm not kidding.
I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clear that.
Yep, I, I kind of thought we sort of did it when he went through his initial qualifications at the very beginning, but. I thought I did too, I, I thought I was aligned with both of my licenses. Well, I, I think, I think we do need to be dealt out of the above. Yep. Any questions by members of the board on this testimony at this time?
Just one quick silly question. I think it was testified, but the location where the building is located is approximately where the old house was? Or is that not correct?
Yeah, I mean, actually, the, the original house was slightly closer to the road than this building. It was, it was more up in the entrance drive, kind of where the rain gardens, so it was actually closer to the street than this one is.
All right, thank you.
Other members of the board have any questions on this testimony at this time? Are there members of the public who have questions on this testimony at this time? Counselor, do you have anything further?
I don't have any other witnesses, and I'll, I guess defer to you, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to provide a short closing before the board's deliberation or not.
Well, I'm going to start by asking if there are members of the public who wish to speak either in opposition or in furtherance of this application at this time. Is there anybody that wishes to come up and speak? If you could identify yourself, you have to be sworn in for this.
Could you please raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Nicholas Homyak, H-O-M-Y-A-K, 26 Oneida Avenue in Hiawatha.
Thank you.
There is no lake, so I'm under oath.
There's a body of water.
This is one of the most impressive planning and engineering assessments and presentations I've, I've heard, not that I've heard a whole lot, but I heard a lot. When we look at our master plan, goal number seven alone, and it says the township policies to preserve Troy Meadows in its natural state and to avoid development in the area in order to promote public health and general well-being of Precipity and the region. In this sense, the word health and general well-being is not only for the ecological gift of Troy Meadows, but for humans, for our mental health. It provides a, a place where you can go to nature and get your head screwed on straight or feel better about things in life, the big connection. I would say that definitely it is an enhancement, and the fact that they are establishing it on a former historic site, and I believe the Smith site was, I could be wrong, I could ask Len, was it visited by Washington himself once? And I believe when the French, when they were going from Morris Town in New England to Virginia to finish off the British on Yorktown, they passed down Everwood Road, and I believe at the very least, they watered their horses there. So the recreation of that structure on this landscape is definitely a plus for Precipity. And I'll leave it at that.
Very good. Any other members of the public have any comments at this time? Hearing and seeing none, unless you want to make a closing statement.
I'll, I'll be super brief because I know it's getting late and everyone wants to leave, or would like to go home and go to sleep at somewhere.
Quit while you're ahead.
I just want to note, as I start out in the beginning of this application, Wildlife Preserves is, is really excited about this application. We really do think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the, to the local community, something that Wildlife Preserves has wanted to do for a long time, is finally able to do. And it furthers all the goals that, that this township has, has sought in its master plan and, and via its township ordinances. So I, I think through the testimony tonight, you've heard, we've established the criteria for the C variances that we're seeking, you heard a bit about Wildlife Preserves and the application, and we hope the board treats the application favorably. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeDich.
Before I make a motion, can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
Yep, first of all, thank you, this is a very, very good project, because I appreciate that. It's very difficult to strike a balance between environmental project where there is minimal or no impact to the environment, so I think this application tried to provide very good balance of that, not damaging environment as much, yet providing something very creative. I'm very excited about children, schoolchildren, especially the younger schoolchildren, be able to go someday here, learn about environment, go on a trail, you know, great field trip, and I can envision that in the future. So very good project, I definitely support something like that. Thank you for that.
Just, just one moment, I want to make sure we all know the conditions, that they've agreed to, to work with the police on traffic and all these, you go through that.
Work with the board engineer regarding stormwater management and addressing recommendations in the engineer's report. To coordinate with the township police department as needed for events, traffic.
Just as clarification on that, they don't have any problem obviously coordinating the township police as need on events, is it going to be specific, some type of event, events that we anticipate there being a certain number of people there?
Anything that you would anticipate would be out of the ordinary.
Yeah, and basically what you would do is you would contact the traffic division, and they would guide you if you wouldn't even need them.
Okay. It's fine with that? Okay.
Okay, and then the last condition was that the lighting would be motion censored around the building and then on, on and off in the parking area when not in use? Or when in use?
The good news is there'll be no affordable housing set aside.
All right, now, Mr. DeDich.
Motion to approve application number 25:504, Wildlife Preserves, Troy Meadow Road, Block 764, Plots 26.1, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance, major soil moving permit for the installation of a maintenance garage, environmental education center, and site work, according to, as per the conditions laid out.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Jolie, would you please call a roll?
Urbario?
Yes.
DeDich?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Emili?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And more.
Yes. All right.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening, is there anything else that needs to come before tonight's board meeting? So move motion. Do I have a second? Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you. You're welcome.